Please be aware that this meeting is being recorded and the opinions expressed by any member of the public do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Haprah-Horsham School District Board of School Directors. And are solely those of the presenter. The Haprah-Horsham District Board hereby expressly disclaims any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public. If we could please stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
And to the great public.
Which stands one nation under God. Okay, Mr. Riker, could you do roll call, please?
Yes, Madam President, thank you. Jen Wilson. Dave Brown.
Here.
Teresa Brown.
Here.
Tara Connor-Halston.
Here.
Jim Greenhall. DJ Schultz.
I'm here.
Susan Hunziger-Hoff.
Here.
Marion McCouch. And Eric Coombs. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riker. We did have an executive session prior to this meeting on personnel matters. We now move to public comment. This is the time for the public to offer their comments on agenda items only. Members of the public wishing to make a comment during the board meeting can connect virtually and you could raise your hand by pressing, doing the raise hand button or pressing star nine on your phone. All of the usual procedures for public comment as follow apply. You need to state your name, your address, municipality of residence. A public comment must be directed to the board and please limit your comments to three minutes. It's the board's practice not to engage in dialogue with the speakers. Is there any one waiting to make a public comment?
Give me one second. I have trouble pulling up my participants list. There we go. Okay. Uh, yes, first for public comment is Justin Gindhart. You can go ahead and unmute and speak.
All right. Good evening. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I see that we're going to be voting on board members today for president and vice president. As a parent and a resident, I just want to say that the leadership of the board has been abhorrent for this entire pandemic situation. I've lost any and all faith I have in our school board leaders. And I highly urge that in this vote tonight, we get some new leadership. And we hopefully change this in a direction that proper reflects the majority of the public's opinion on getting our kids back in school for safety and for their interests. Unfortunately, I have a very sneaky suspicion that this is going to be a party line vote and as the Democrats lead the majority of this. I wouldn't be surprised to see that the same officers come back out as they are right now. But again, I'm urging every single one of you to take a long, hard look at what's going on. Remember, there is elections coming up in November. For those that are up for election, I urge you all to take our considerations in when you make the choice for the new school board leadership. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to be heard?
Uh, no, there are no other hands raised.
Okay, so next on the agenda is going to be the election of a temporary president. So nominations are now in order for the office of temporary president. Are there any nominations?
I nominate DJ Schultz as the temporary president.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing as there are no further nominations. All in favor of DJ Schultz as temporary president, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, receiving the majority of the votes, DJ Schultz is the temporary president.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the vote of confidence. Just making sure I'm reading this right. The next order of business, I need to ask, are there any public comments as to the agenda?
No, we already did that. Sorry.
Next on the agenda is the election of board president. Nominations are now in order for the office of board president. Are there any nominations for board president?
I, Teresa E. Brown, nominate Jennifer Wilson for president of the Haprah-Horsham School District Board of School Directors.
Do we have a second?
No second.
Okay.
Very good evening, everybody.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Seeing there are no further nominations, we will close nominations and proceed to vote on board president. All in favor of Jen Wilson as board president, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Jen, I think you're president again.
Okay, so next on the agenda is election of the vice president. Nominations are now in order for the office of vice president.
I, Teresa E. Brown, nominate David Brown for vice president of the Haprah-Horsham School Board.
Are there other nominations? Seeing there are no further nominations, we will close the nominations and proceed to vote on vice president. All in favor of David Brown as vice president, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Receiving the majority of the votes, David Brown is named vice president. Thank you for re-electing me as president.
And myself, thank you very much.
Okay, now we have the second public comment section. If any members of the public wish to make a comment at this point, please raise your hand or hit star nine on your phone. Seeing there are no members wishing to make a public comment, I motion to adjourn the meeting.
I will second that.
All of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you. We'll now move to our regular legislative meeting. So, good evening and welcome to the December 7, 2020 Legislative Meeting of the Haprah-Horsham School District Board of School Directors. Again, please be aware this meeting is being recorded. The opinions expressed by any member of the public do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Haprah-Horsham School District Board of School Directors and are solely those of the presenter. The Haprah-Horsham District Board hereby expressly disclaims any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public. Could we please stand for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Riker, could we please have roll call?
Thank you, Madam President. Okay, Jen Wilson.
Here.
Dave Brown.
Here.
Teresa Brown.
Here.
Tara Connor-Halston.
Here.
Jim Greenhall. DJ Schultz.
I'm here.
Susan Hunziger-Hoff.
Here.
Marion McCouch. Eric Coombs. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Riker. We will now have a public budget presentation by Ms. Karen Gonzalez.
Thank you, Madam President. Angel, could you please share that document?
Don't see Angel on the.
Yeah, she, she left and just came back. Hold on, I need to re-promote her.
Okay, Angel, your co-host, you should be able to share.
Well, Angel's bringing that up. I'll just say that this is the budget formulation, planning for the 2122 school year. This is the timeline that we are working on for the 2021 planning year. And you can move to the next slide, Angel. And what we're going to look at first is the challenges that we're facing as we start on this, on this budget year. And of course, first and foremost, we're looking at the COVID-19 impact and fallout. This is one of the major challenges we'll be dealing with. The uncertainty, the predictability, and the impact on both revenues and expenses. We see the significant uncertainty with both, with all local, state, and federal revenues. The state is struggling to manage their budget. They have a subsidy formula. We, at this point, they say that we should have no negative impact from one year to the next, from the 2021 to 2122. But they are short on some of the gambling proceeds. They had to find money to meet our funds for this year. Through some budget transfers on their own. We have our pension contribution rates that are increasing from the prior year. That was just certified at 34.94%. A slight increase from 34.51 this year. Obviously, some of the transportation issues that we're dealing with and you know, whether we're transporting students or not, whether we're having expenses, continued expenses, whether that's private school transportation and continued transportation and continued staffing. We obviously, again, as a result of COVID, as a large part of that, the significant impact on the investment earnings. They're, they're really almost near zero right now. That is a huge decrease from where we were last year. And where we are right now, we're actually have some earnings right now because we have some things that we're at longer term. So we will have some earnings, but it will be a significant decrease and looking at the future year 2122, it definitely will be a drop, a planned drop, a significant drop. We also have changing demographics and in some of the student populations and then looking at potential staffing increases. This is an area that prior to COVID, we had started to identify some of the changes in the population and some of the areas of growth. And whether we were going to need staffing increases either through compliance or just through population. With the, with the COVID impact, we'll continue to watch this. This is a very unpredictable number right now. We actually have a slight decline in our student population. As many other schools have some students dropping out to attend other schools, private schools, charter schools. And increasing our charter school costs right now. Again, we hope this will be a rebound. We plan, expect it to be a rebound. Once students are back in school, but we're dealing with that right now. That is a very unpredictable number as well. And recruiting and retaining staff is an ongoing issue that we will continue to work on. Next, next slide. As we continue through the challenges, again, the expenditures in select areas of the budget, I mentioned the charter school tuition is, is up right now. And with some declining enrollment, special education costs continue to rise. We have our Act One number has been set, but again, the increase that comes through the Act One tax allowable increase is not necessary enough to offset these costs. We have aging facilities that we're dealing with, you know, continuing to look at those. We've rebuilt two elementary schools. And we are looking at the middle school project over the next few years. And then some just additional ongoing annual maintenance for some of the other buildings. We also are looking at some business interruption and operational inefficiencies. This is not necessarily related to us. We have been able to weather that very well. But what we're looking at is the impact on the businesses that we deal with. Through bids, we're looking at the bids with the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit for our copy paper, our custodial paper, our fuel, our energy. Those areas have been very difficult to work with the inventory balances on hand. What we expect to use the rest of the year again is a very unpredictable number. And then trying to identify what we want to order and at what price we can get. At this point, when not knowing what the rest of the year will look like. Okay, thank you, Angel. So we start with the budget timeline. This started back in September. And this, the very first thing we get is the Act One index has been confirmed at 3%. To give you an idea, last year was 2.6. So that, that is some good news. And again, but looking ahead, this is a number that the state calculates. We're not sure where I'll go from there. Go ahead. And then 1124, we're just finishing up entering some of the bids that we put in through Montgomery County Intermediate Unit. And the, the schools and departments put in their orders. Again, trying to base it on what inventory looks like it will be at the end of this year. Again, not sure how we'll use things. This is also the copy paper and the custodial paper. Thank you, Angel. And then we're looking at December. So this is the first presentation of five presentations. That's tonight, going over the budget timeline, the planning timeline. And then what we're also looking at to do tonight is to adopt the resolution or have that reviewed, indicating that they will not raise taxes above that index of 3.0. Once that's approved, that would be sent on to the PDE, submitted through the state reporting portal. We also are, have certified the Sterling Tax Credit to the Pennsylvania Department of Education. This is related to the Philadelphia Wage Tax and how we get some of those funds back. Through our property tax reduction numbers. Then at the end of the month, we will be, right now through the end of the month, this, the staff is putting in, all the departments and the buildings are putting in their budget detail. Into the financial system and, you know, reviewing those numbers and at, as soon as that is complete, we'll go through nearly the end of January at Phase One reviewing. Bob and I will be looking at those numbers. We'll be working with each of the departments and the buildings to send them reports, some trending information. Just trying to look at the numbers and see if there's any areas that we can continue to make cuts. Or make sure that we have things identified that we do need to include and we'll continue to communicate that with them. On the 31st, the deadline, this is for the, for our school boards, for the district to send out notices to all property owners, homestead and farmstead. Homeowners and farmowners by first class mail. Anybody that needs to be, that is not currently needs to be, wants to be on the homestead reduction. This is actually sent out for us on our behalf by the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit through coordination that they do for all local school districts. January 19th, this will be our next presentation. And here we will start to identify more closely the revenues, the expected revenues, expenditures, and what may look like our shortfall at that point. We will continue to work again with the schools and the departments to try and identify those numbers where we can at that point. Again, with the impact of COVID makes it very difficult at this point. But we will continue to look for numbers, look for trends, look for data, historical data on where we are. And January to April, we will continue, this will be the Phase Two, we'll continue to work again on trying to identify any needs, any staffing needs, any reductions that we can make and how we can allocate, what resources we do have. Just trying to look ahead at some of the, where we are right now in some of these numbers, looking at where we are with local funding. We have actually, very fortunately, stayed fairly stable in real estate collections. We're actually up about 1.6 million. But you have to consider that in that is the tax increase, so 1.6 million over the prior year, but within that is what was raising taxes. We also have been able to stay, you know, fairly steady with the earned income. It's only about, about 100,000. But again, that is pretty good news considering where we are with COVID. The delinquent tax, we're actually up about 90,000, up to about 540 as a comparison from year to year. Transfer tax is down a little bit. That is because last year, we actually had two commercial properties settle in the first, in the fall. And so we're down a little bit from that comparison, but we do have two commercial properties that we expect to settle in the near future that will help us end the year. And I think on a good note in that, we actually had the Lime Kiln Golf Facility and the Aberson Senior Center is actually being turned over. It was sold. And is turning over from nonprofit to profit, which will help us bring in some transfer tax and some additional revenues in the next year. Okay. We look at February. We're looking at, this is the deadline that you actually have to submit the resolution of not raising taxes above the Act One index to the state, but we will be required to send that in, within the week of actually approving that. Then 226 is when we will start to ask the schools and departments to put in their one-time budget needs. And this is a strategy that we have been put in place several years now. Where we ask everybody to work with the operations, Director of Operations, Joe Crowe. And the buildings themselves and the different departments of anything that they might need, they anticipate needing, whether that's highly priced equipment or some repairs or renovations and trying to identify those costs so that we don't actually add it to the budget to make it a volatile budget from year to year. We try to take those funds, smooth out the budget. And, and take those from the capital reserve fund and we plan for that year to year through the spending plan. In March, March 1st, this is for the, the homestead applications that were sent out by the IU for us. This is when the homeowners and farmowners actually have to have these returned back to the county assessor's office. And if approved, they would actually see the reduction on their tax bills. They would be adjusted on our tax bills before they go out. Once we are notified of the amount of funding we are able to get through the state. On 315, we'll have another update to the school board. And again, this is one of the series and we will go through again, hopefully identifying, continuing to tighten up and get closer and closer on numbers. Find, you know, seeing what the final impacts of some things with COVID, with remote learning, with expenses we've had to incur as part of COVID and where the revenues are sitting at that point. In April, we're looking, this will be the, to the finance committee, we make a presentation where we provide a very detailed budget document presentation. That provides historical data with where we've been in the Act One index, where we've been in the tax rate increases, where we've been in expenditures and revenues in comparison to the rest of the county. We also provide departmental comparisons from year to year. And we also provide some detail on where the shortfall might be at that point. Then this is April 6th, the Secretary of Budget certifies the amount of revenue available in the Property Tax Relief Fund. This is what is often referred to as gambling funds. This is what actually helps fund the homestead relief. And this, they will then let us know what we have. And then there's a calculation that's done by parcel of those eligible for the relief. And that's what gets deducted from everybody's taxes that is eligible. And then this again is a period of time where we will continue to review with the departments and the buildings, their, their budgets and where we sit, making sure that we've included everything we need. If there's been any staffing changes, if there's been any increase in special education needs, that we've included that. And continue to look for ongoing reductions if possible and where we might be again in the revenue projections at that point. Looking at May, if, if the Property Tax Reduction Fund, this is where we're saying about the gambling funds. And this is where it's certified. This is where we will get the notification of what funds are available. Again, this is a number that is, is a little concerning because this year we actually were shorted. Not quite half, but half initially while the state worked through their budget to identify where they could allocate funds to meet the number that we were told on 5-1 of last year. So that we recently just received the balance of those funds. So this is a concern and where it will sit for the future. And then on 5-17, this is where we will do the preliminary budget approval. We'll make a presentation, we'll, we'll identify this, the cost, where we are at that point, if there's any deduct, any shortfall. And this is a public presentation and we set this up in a format that is certified by the state. Angel, sorry, thank you. And then in June, as, as we come into the end of the planning year, we have the deadline to publish. We need to notify the public that we are going to adopt a final budget. And that will be in the paper and then, and, and also on the website. And then on 621, at our school board meeting, we will adopt the final budget. And then by 630, we need to send that document in through an upload process through the state portal of our final budget approval. Are there any questions or any other details I can provide? Answer any questions? Bob, anything you'd like to add?
No, I think you covered it. Very good. Next update will be January.
All right. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
So we will now move to public comment. This is the time for the public to offer their comments on agenda items only. Any members of the public wishing to make a comment during the meeting can raise your hand by hitting star nine on your phone or raise your hand by using the raise hand button on Zoom. All of the usual procedures for public comments as follow applies. Please state your name, your address, and municipality of residence. All public comments have to be directed to the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes. And it is the board's practice to not engage in dialogue with speakers. Once you have been, your hand has been raised, the moderator will notify you when it is your turn to speak and at that time you can unmute yourself. Do we have any public comments on agenda items?
Okay, Joseph Martini, you are first up. You I'm getting an error that you're not available or you're not allowed to talk. I can't promote you because you were using an older version of Zoom. So that is something that we get. I would encourage people to update their Zoom clients on their PC or if they have an iPad or Android device to update it from the App Store. And I'm sorry, I'm not allowed to promote you.
Any other people wishing to be heard? At this time? Okay. Looks like there are none. So we will move to the minutes. So we are looking to approve the minutes from the November 16th board meeting. So I'm looking for a motion for approval of those minutes.
This is DJ Schultz. I move to approve the minutes.
Susan Hunziger-Hoff, I'll second that.
Any comments? Any, uh, comments or discussion around the minutes? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, uh, we will move to consent agenda items. A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, N, J.
David Brown, I'll make a motion to approve.
Reese Brown, I second.
Is there any discussion around the consent agenda items? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Um, human resources action items. So I'm looking for approval of item A, support staff.
David Brown will make a motion to approve.
AJ Schultz, I'll second that.
Any discussion? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We'll move to special services action items. Item A, approval for alternative instruction request for a high school student.
This is DJ. I make a motion to approve that.
Reese Brown, I second.
Any discussion around that item? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Uh, we will now move to the business office action items. Item A and item B. Uh, item A is the resolution stay within the Act One Index and item B is the taxes destined stipulations. Looking for a motion for approval of those items.
Motion from Tara Connor-Halston.
Second, Reese Brown.
Any discussions around those items? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we will now move to the reports. Uh, up, we have the curriculum committee report by Ms. Hussin your hall.
Thank you, Madam President. We've not officially met since I last reported on the ongoing work of the curriculum committee. Uh, but we will have a meeting tomorrow afternoon at three, um, uh, via, uh, Microsoft Teams. And we will be discussing, um, the high school course selection guide. Uh, professional development report and an update on Keystone Exam. So tomorrow at 3:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we now move to facilities committee report. Mr. Coombs is not here. Mr. Riker, do you have anything to report on facilities?
Uh, no update. Uh, we do, other than, uh, we do have a combined facilities finance committee meeting set for, uh, December 16th.
Um, finance committee report. Ms. McCouch is not here. Um, but again, as Mr. Riker said, we have a combined meeting coming up for facilities and finance. Uh, human resources committee report, Mr. Brown?
Uh, any and all personnel discussions at this stage have been, uh, discussed in executive session. So, um, nothing to report.
Uh, policy committee report, Ms. Schultz.
Yes, thank you. I do have a report and actually need to ask for, to approve the second readings of the social media policy. The employment of family member policy, the freedom of speech in non-school setting and the maintaining appropriate boundaries with students. Again, this is all the second reading of these policies, which were read at the last action meeting and discussed during our policy committee meetings.
I, Teresa. So moved. I'll second it.
Any discussion around the second reading of these policies? All of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, uh, we now move to the lia- liaison reports. Uh, we have Eastern Center for Arts and Technology, Ms. Connor-Halston.
We have not met since last meeting. We are meeting this Wednesday, so I don't have anything to report right now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, federal programs report, Dr. Taylor.
So report receiving, Madam President. Thank you.
Montgomery County Immediate Unit Report, uh, that is myself. I do not have anything to report. Uh, PSBA report, Ms. Brown.
Uh, I just want to encourage the board to, um, attend some of the webinars. Uh, some really nice ones coming up. Um, one is School Board Secretary Conference, January 27th. Uh, Equity Digital Workshop, December 10th. Um, and a whole lot of other ones that are really, I think valuable. That's my rephrase.
Thank you. As Superintendent's Report, Dr. Eva Slash.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. Uh, just briefly wanted to offer a clarification around the, uh, plan for the district's return to in-person instruction. Transition, uh, based on our vote at last meeting, uh, we are scheduled to return to hybrid instruction on January 11th. Uh, so that would be the next step. There will be communication coming from buildings to families prior to that. Uh, but families can expect, uh, to, to resume, uh, that in-person instruction at that time. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Right. So now we move to our second public comment section. Uh, this is the public comment section where people can, uh, make comments on non-agenda items. Um, if you wish to speak, please raise your hand on Zoom or by hitting star nine on your phone. That will alert the meeting host that you wish to speak. Um, when it is your turn, you will be changed to a speaking role. And prompted on the call that it is your turn to speak. Speaking is limited to three minutes. Um, and I ask again that you state your name, address and municipality, uh, before starting with your comment. Are there any, uh, members wishing to be heard?
I do not see any hands ready. Just Madam President.
Hey, uh, Mr. Riker and Dr. Taylor, I understand we have some emails.
Uh, yes, we do, Madam President. I will start. Okay, I write to the board to reconsider its decision to cancel the 2020-21 wrestling season for Happer-Horsham High School Student Athletes. Having coached high school wrestling for 26 years in the Suburban One League, 18 years at Happer-Horsham. I have seen many infectious conditions and all conditions have been kept in check with proper safety measures. Wrestling already has extensive mat cleaning procedures and personal hygiene policies in place. And additional measures would be added to limit exposure to COVID. I would recommend air purification systems be added to the wrestling room, weight room and gymnasiums. Additionally, having coached this past fall at, at Happer-Horsham as the head of girls golf coach. Uh, I am aware of all safety measures of the district. SOL District One and PIAA. I have served on the D1 Wrestling Steering Committee and would like to report that D1 is in support of wrestling to be competed this winter under the PIAA guidelines. Similar to wrestling, basketball has direct body contact without proper social distancing. Thus, the comparison should be made with both sports. Why no wrestling, but basketball is not even considered for cancellation? Most of all, SOL twe- teams are moving forward with wrestling this season except for Happer-Horsham. Across the country, wrestling has continued during the pandemic and additional safety measures and limited fans. The low number of positive COVID-19 in the wrestling community nationwide and in PA as well. As the low numbers in all of PA high school athletic programs should also be noted as another reason to not exclude wrestling in the winter. If kids cannot be safe to come to school, it should be simply understood they can't compete in any sport that is conducted indoors. The fact that wrestling has been singled out to be canceled represents an unwillingness for the Happer-Horsham School District to provide opportunity to all students. As an HH alumni and coach, I find it difficult to sit back and stay and say it's okay for other winter sports to be conducted without concern. If one sport is difficult to be managed by the high school, then all sports should be canceled. This should be a collective decision by the board for all sports. Please reconsider, a revote after hearing from the coaching staff, parents, student athletes and wrestling community in regard to the plan. To safely contest wrestling this season. Thank you for your consideration with this matter. Sincerely, Glenn Kaiser.
This message is from John Ellis, 36 Holly Drive, Happer, PA. Good evening and thank you for taking time to read emails pertaining to the cancellation of wrestling this season at Happer-Horsham. First, I would like to make the point that the superintendent and, and the athletic director having no communication with Coach Trent prior to making this important decisions is completely ignorant. This showed a very poor example of strong leadership. I applaud certain board members who tried to advocate and at least listen to what the coach has to offer, has to offer at the last meeting. The fact that wrestling was the only winter sport on the cancellation list is both disheartening and quite frankly unfair on so many levels. Most schools within a five mile radius of all of our homes are not only going back to school to some sort of in-person learning on 12-7. They are also resuming winter sports, including wrestling. I am assuming that the board members have not and do not follow the sport of wrestling. The sport of wrestling, however, is taking place across the country from youth levels to international levels with specific parameters in place to make it safe. How can you say that wrestling is unsafe, but yet other indoor sports like basketball are not? It is not unlikely that while playing these other sports, there will not be direct contact within six feet of other players. Also, you keep using CHOP as a reference to make these poor decisions. However, if you speak with any CHOP doctor at our surrounding CHOP care network offices in Monco and Bucks County. They are encouraging parents to put their children back in school. Maybe you should invite these alleged CHOP references that you keep using in your board meeting so we can hear it straight from their mouths instead of looking at a chart slash model. A few board members last week kept saying they didn't want it hanging over their heads if a child gets sick from COVID. However, it is concerning that you are okay having the mental health of our children hanging over your head. You all continue to compromise the mental health of our children and each and every decision like this. I can guarantee that if the current athletic director's kids were involved with wrestling or any sport. At that he would be a strong advocate to resume this activity in a safe manner. For some of these kids, sports and school are their only safety net and it serves as an outlet for other underlying behavioral health issues. As a Happer-Horsham graduate and Happer-Horsham Wrestling alumni, I am asking to please give Trent. A chance to give these kids wrestling season. Many of these kids have been training since preschool for their opportunity to wrestle at the high school level. Including my own kids who will be part of the high school program in a few years. I, along with the taxpaying parents in this community, am having a really hard time understanding how almost every other district in Montgomery County. Is following, finding a way to make in-school learning and sports work. However, Happer-Horsham is struggling. These are unprecedented times for sure, but it is our right to be given a choice. Have parents sign waivers and get these kids back in school and back in sports. It, if it's not a good fit for anyone's family, they can choose not to participate this year. Thank you for your time, John Ellis.
Okay, Ms. Wilson, thank you for letting me know that conversation will happen. Can you please let me know the outcome of that meeting? Additionally, I'd like to answer, an answer to my request to reopen the vote on canceling the entire wrestling seasons as I'd like to have this as an agenda item at the next board meeting. Additionally, when will public discussion on this matter be allowed in the community informed that the decision will happen? Each wrestler whose lives are directly impacted deserve to be heard, especially for many, it directly impacts college scholarship and attendance as well as their ranking within the league. Thank you, Jennifer Sir. I think that concludes all of the comments, um, this evening.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay. Any other comments from board members and/or the superintendent?
I just have a quick comment about, um, the policy, the next policy committee meeting. I want to thank all of those members for being flexible because we did have to reschedule. And I wanted to let the board know, the entire board know that, um, you're definitely invited to attend the policy meeting, which will now be on. The 15th, Tuesday, the 15th of December. Moving forward, our policy meetings will be, um, a standing meeting on the first, uh, Wednesday of the month. Um, at the next policy meeting, we're going to be continuing our discussion on the equity policy and I encourage everyone again to read the PSBA Equity Action Plan. It's on their website. Thank you.
Any other comments from board or superintendent? Okay, if not, I will move and, uh, look for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Make a motion, it's David Brown.
Teresa Brown, second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Uh, thank you and have a good evening.
You as well.